Substitution. The minority, but I do. I have a referral. Supermole, the partner, oh? My third dividend.
Any pila?
Oh, do you have a second dividend? Oh, do you have two as well?
Second dividend. But my one, my one second dividend, my name.
True or no? I got it. My second dividend, it's a one.
Please, I got my one. I got my one. My second dividend, I got my one. I got my one. Because I'm going to. I have to. I have to leave. So, I should go. I mean, I want to.
The important thing is.
The session is now called to order. Everybody is requested to rise for the singing of the national anthem.
Bayang magiliw, peras ang silang anan. Alag ng kuso, sa tipit moy buhay. Lupang hiniram, duya ka lang magigil. Sa manlulupi, kita pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa lakit ng pahang. May hilang ang kula at awit sa paglayang pinawahan. Ang isap ng wata at mo'y kamupay nararegim. Ang pituming na paraw niya kailan, pag may magidili. Lupan ang maraw ng war, aming pangsikap. Uyay lamig sa tipit ko. Aming ligaya dapat may magmaapin at lamatay ng daming sayo.
Please remain standing for one minute silent prayer. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to defer the calling of the roll.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, request for a one minute suspension.
Session suspended.
Reference.
Session resume.
Mr. Speaker, I move to defer the approval of the journal. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There are no objection. The chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up the reference of business and request the secretary general to direct it to read the title of the bills and resolutions on first reading.
Is there an objection? The chair here is none. The secretary general is directed to read the title of the House bill resolution.
Reference of business. Bills on first reading. House Bill number 4056. Providing pre-irrigation service and unaccelerated program for the construction of irrigation projects by Representative Chavez and Pangaliban.
To the committee on agriculture and food.
House Bill 4057. Amending section 151 of Republic Act number 8424 by Representative Co.
To the committee on ways and means.
House Bill number 4058. Declaring the Chocolate Hills as national patrimony, natural heritage park by Representative Aumentado.
To the committee on natural resources.
House Bill number 4059. Strengthening the national measurement infrastructure system by Representatives Aumentado and Halos Ho.
To the committee on science and technology.
House Bill numbers 4060, 4601, 4097 to 4099. Converting certain roads into national roads in Kalinga Province and Quezon Province by Representative Mangawan and Enverga.
To the committee on public works and highways.
House Bill number 4062. Redefining the scope of Philippine Science High School system by Representative Mendy.
To the committee on science and technology.
House Bill number 4063. Establishing the Philippine Sea with Industry Development Authority by Representative Mendy.
To the committee on government reorganization and the committee on aqua culture and fisheries resources.
House Bill number 4064. Establishing the Philippine River Industry Development Authority by Representative Mendy.
To the committee on government reorganization and committee on agriculture and food.
House Bill number 4065. Establishing regular LTO district office in Panabo City, Dabao del Norte by Representative Ploirendo.
To the committee on transportation.
House Bill number 4066. Creating barangay to La Lian in Santo Tomas, province of Dabao del Norte by Representative Ploirendo.
To the committee on local government.
House Bill number 4067. Amending Republic Act number 7042 as amended by Republic Act number 8179 by Representative Yap A.
To the committee on trade and industry.
House Bill number 4068. Increasing the allowable personal and additional exemptions of individual taxpayers by Representative Subiri.
To the committee on ways and means.
House Bill number 4069. Integrated drug prevention education in junior high school curriculum by Representative Bilaro.
To the committee on basic education and culture.
House Bill number 4070. Amending Republic Act number 53 by Representative Rodriguez M.
To the committee on public information.
House Bill number 4071. Granting bereavement leave of ten working days with pay to employees in the private and public sectors in the event of death of an immediate family member by Representative Garcia Albano.
To the committee on labor and employment and the committee on civil service and professional regulation.
House Bill number 4072. Reapportioning the current four legislative districts of the province of Quezon to seven legislative districts by Representative Suarez.
To the committee on local government.
House Bill number 4073. Expanding the use of the illegal assistance fund by Representative Pacquiao.
To the committee on overseas workers affairs.
House Bill number 4074. Transferring the seats of two new RTC branches from the municipality Palabel, province of Sarangani, to the municipalities of Kiamba and Malungon by Representative Pacquiao.
To the committee on justice.
House Bill number 4075. Converting the Malungon-Sarangani to Santa Maria double occidental road into a national secondary road by Representative Pacquiao.
To the committee on public works and highways.
House Bill number 4076. Establishing a cattle fattening station and agrofeeds experimental farm in each of the municipalities of Prisal, Pinocpok, and the city of Tabok in Kalinga Province by Representative Mangawan.
To the committee on agriculture and food.
House Bill number 4077. Protecting workers in the event of company closures or cessation of operations by Representative Tambunting.
To the committee on labor and employment.
House Bill number 4078. Strengthening the Commission on Human Rights by Representative Tambunting.
To the committee on human rights.
House Bill number 4079. Institutionalizing the open electronic learning school systems in the Philippines by Representative Tambunting.
To the committee on basic education and culture and the committee on higher and technical education.
House Bill number 4080. Providing for women empowerment by Representative Tambunting.
To the committee on women and gender equality.
House Bill number 4081. Repeating the incentive provisions of industry and sector-specific and investments and incentives-related laws by Representative Tambunting.
To the committee on trade and industry.
House Bill number 4082. Providing for the share in the national taxes of LGUs by Representative Tambunting.
To the committee on local government.
House Bill number 4083. Further amending Republic Act number 7432 by Representative Alvarez F.
To the committee on population and family relations.
House Bill number 4084. Mandating the establishment of youth development centers in every city and municipality in the country by Representative Bernos.
To the committee on youth and sports development.
House Bill number 4085. Regulating the transportation network service by Representative Bernos.
To the committee on transportation.
House Bill number 4086. Establishing the Lando del Norte Sports Training Center by Representatives Dimaporo M. and Dimaporo A.
To the committee on youth and sports development.
House Bill number 4087. Providing measures to enhance the acceptability of agricultural lands as security for loans obtained from lenders, banks, and other financial institutions by Representatives Lee and Salon.
To the committee on banks and financial intermediaries.
House Bill number 4088. Institutionalizing microdebt, microcredit financing for the agricultural sector by Representatives Lee and Salon.
To the committee on agriculture and food.
House Bill number 4089. Establishing the Coconut Farmers' and Industry Trust Fund by Representatives Lee and Salon.
To the committee on agriculture and food.
House Bill number 4090. Strengthening Kidan and Rural Credit Guarantee Corporation, broadening its powers and resources to support micro, small, and medium enterprises, farmers, fisherfolks, and farmers by Representatives Lee and Salon.
To the committee on government enterprises and privatization and committee on agriculture and food.
House Bill number 4091. Removing the restrictions under sections 118 and 119 of Commonwealth Act number 141 as amended by Representative Kimbo.
To the committee on justice.
House Bill number 4092. Amending sections 108, 123, 184, and 185 of the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997 as amended by Representative Kimbo.
To the committee on ways and means.
House Bill number 4093. Mandating the authentication of online and social media membership in the country by Representative Tevez.
To the committee on information and communications technology.
House Bill number 4094. Converting the municipality of Mauban in the province of Quezon into a component city to be known as the city of Mauban by Representatives Enverga.
To the committee on local government.
House Bill number 4095. Providing additional benefits and incentives to all barangay tanos by Representatives Enverga.
To the committee on local government.
House Bill number 4096. Creating the National Eye Center by Representatives Enverga.
To the committee on health.
House Bill number 4101. Promoting mental health by Representatives Rowapuno.
To the committee on health.
House Bill number 4102. Providing for the development and upgrading of the Clark International Airport in Pampanca by Representatives Tambunting.
To the committee on transportation.
House Bill number 4103. Exempting employers with less than ten employees from securing business permits from their respective cities or municipalities by Representatives Bilaro.
To the committee on small business and entrepreneurship development.
House Bill number 4104. Strengthening the role of parents-teacher association in the Philippine educational system by Representatives Bilaro.
To the committee on basic education and culture.
House Bill number 4105. Amending section six of Republic Act number 6958 by Representatives Radaza.
To the committee on government enterprises and privatization and the committee on transportation.
House Bill number 4106. Strengthening the powers and functions of the authority of the port area of Bataan by Representatives Garcia Ching.
To the committee on economic affairs and committee on trade and industry.
Resolutions. House Resolution 470. Directing the committee on transportation to inquire on the DOTR decision to adopt former DOT secretary Abay's proposed compromise of establishing two rail terminals on the Line 1, Line 3, Line 7, unified stations between SM North Edsa and Trinoma by Representatives Sarate.
To the committee on rules.
House Resolution 471. Directing the SALT Corporation Board of Directors to expedite the renewal of their power supply agreements with the Mindanao Electric Cooperatives and to present its power allocation for the next five years by Representatives Oy Barreta.
To the committee on rules.
House Resolution 472. Deferrment of the privatization of Agus Pulangi Hydroelectric Power Plants by Representatives Oy Barreta.
To the committee on energy.
House Resolution 473. Urging the committees on government reorganization, housing and urban development, and metro development authority to create, authorize, and empower a government institution that will study, regulate, and implement a harmonized, comprehensive urban planning in Metro Manila by Representatives Castillo and Etal.
To the committee on government reorganization and committee on housing and urban development.
House Resolution 474. Congratulating Miss Janice Haranilia Dulbina for placing as one of the top ten finalists and winning the Best Dresser Special Award during the Miss International Pageant 2015 held at Tokyo, Japan by Representatives Abue.
To the committee on rules.
House Resolution 475. Urging the committee on Metro Manila development to investigate the unabated, unplanned, and unsound land development in Metro Manila which worsened traffic conditions and contributed to urban blind by Representatives Batokabi, Garbendan Co.
To the committee on rules.
House Resolution 476. Urging the committee on communications, joint lead with the committee on ways and means and Metro Manila development to inquire into the alarming state under far the slot-based communication and internet service quality provided by network operators by Representatives Tevez, Etal.
To the committee on rules.
House Resolution 477. Congratulating and commending Team Philippines for bagging three golds and five bronzes in the recently held World Taekwondo, Pumza Championships, and Lima, Peru by Representatives Sambam, Nogralles J., and Nogralles K.
To the committee on youth and sports development.
Committee reports. Committee reports. Number 15 on basic education and culture on House Bill number 2576.
To the committee on rules.
Committee report number 16 by the committee on government enterprises and privatization on House Bill number 21758.
To the committee on rules.
Committee report number 17 by the committee on local government on House Bill number 4149.
To the committee on rules. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, we move to recognize some guests. The guests of Representative Sherri Deloso Montalia of the second district of Sambales, the Civil Engineer Bachelor 2009 of Ramon Magcaysite Technological University in Sambales, namely Marcel Deloso Hilario, Juan Bugo Gonzalez, Marian Caixia Damassena, Ariel Alaiai. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Please, the guests of Representative Deloso Montalia, please rise and be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, move to one minute suspension.
Session suspended.
¿Qué tal?
¿Qué tal?
Ah, chao.
¿Qué tal?
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may we acknowledge our guests. Specifically, they are guests of Deputy Speaker Gwendoline Garcia, Deputy Speaker Romero Kimbo, Honorable Gary Alejano, and Honorable Ricky Josebio. They are the Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative Program and the American Council of Young Political Leaders. We have Attorney Patrick Lestinas, Director of Government Affairs for Verizon Communications, New York, USA. And we have officers from the US Embassy, Mr. Jeffrey Seiberg-Gartner and Mr. Ryan Madrid. They are accompanied by Ms. Charina Nava Sakagin.
The guests of Representative Garcia, Kimbo, Alejano, Josebio, please rise and be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
The Secretary is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives, Abad, Abaya, Abayon, Abellanosha, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Ajong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alontenagiat, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aragonés, Arbison, Arsenias, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batucabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolivia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulut Mictan, Cagas, Calderón, Calixrubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilaú, Castelo, Casofrants, Casofredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Seráfica, Siriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Cuanco, Juliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisólogo, Cuba, Juárezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Dalop, Dasa, Jesús, De Venesia, De Vera, De Pensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, De Maporo Abdullah, De Maporo Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Regel, Ermita Bohain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortún, Fortuno, Fentebelia, Garbin, García Gwendoline, García Jose, García Albano, Gary Richard, Gary Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Guano Cristina, Gomar, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurel Dong, González Fernando, Goreseta, Gulyas, Fernández, Herrera Di, Pofar, Alusos, Javier, Co, Kongun, Labat Labat, Lacson, Legman, Lenete, Laugán, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaichong, Lubrigat, López Benhor, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Soarto, Mangodadato Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malañaon, Waminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabás, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Robapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque Harry, Roque Rogelio, Sacdalan, Sagarbaría, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbagon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sadus Rekto, Sermeto Cesar, Sermeto Edgar, Savillano, Semah, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Suansige Strilita, Suansigurayo, Suárez, Sielbarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagros, Tan Sherry, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupaz, Torapi Nataman, Ti, Umalí, Unavia, Ungab, Unico, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Caterra, Veloso, Vergara, Villa Puerte, Villa Nueva, Villa Rasa Suárez, Villa Rica, Villa Rin, Villa Go, Yap Arthur, Yap Meléseu, Yap Victor, Yu, Semora Marcamin, Semora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 223 members responded to the call.
With 223 present, the Chair declares a cordon. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the Journal of the previous session, Journal Number 38. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up bills on third reading.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take for consideration House Bill Number 3408 and direct the Secretary General to read the title and thereafter take the nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General will read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Mr. Speaker.
What's the pleasure of the representative from Albay, Honorable Legman?
Before we go on voting, on the measure, I understand this will be the third voting, I have made a reservation to make a short manifestation. So after the title of the bill is recited by the Secretariat, then I would be asking for recognition.
Majority Leader.
We will gladly accommodate the gentleman, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General will read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. May I request the honorable representative from Albay to make the manifestation now because once we start the nominal voting, it cannot be interrupted. Please proceed.
That's precisely why I said that before the voting, I would make a manifestation. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to make the manifestation now. I seek recognition, Mr. Speaker, not to oppose any motion to approve on third reading House Bill Number 3408 or the 2017 General Appropriations Bill. I rise to manifest my reservations on the validity of approving on third reading the 2017 GAB based on the President's message for its immediate enactment pursuant to Section 26, Paragraph 2 of Article 6 of the Constitution, which provides, and I quote, "No bill by either house will become a law unless it has passed three readings on separate days and printed copies thereof in its final form have been distributed to its members three days before its passage, except when the President certifies to the necessity of its immediate enactment to meet a public calamity or emergency." An emergency. Let me underscore the last portion of this provision. The President certifies to the necessity of its immediate enactment to meet a public calamity and emergency. For the enlightenment of the members of the House, I have great reservations on the compliance of the President's certification on the immediate enactment of the 2017 General Appropriations Bill pursuant to Section 26, 2 of Article 6 for the following reasons. One, both the letter dated 11 October 2016 of President Duterte and the letter also dated 11 October 2016 of the Executive Secretary, Miguel Díaz, addressed to Speaker Alvarez, did not mention any public calamity or emergency, necessitating the immediate enactment of House Bill Number 3408 or the General Appropriations Bill. Absent such reference or invocation of a public calamity and emergency, the condition provided for by the Constitution is not complied with. Two, what the letter of President, of President Duterte mentioned justifying the immediate enactment of the Twenty-Seventeen General Appropriations Bill are the following. A, and I quote, "In order to address the need to maintain continuous government operations following the end of the current fiscal year." B, to expedite the funding of various programs, projects, and activities for fiscal year twenty seventeen. And C, to ensure budgetary preparedness that will enable the government to effectively perform its constitutional mandate, and quote. Mister Speaker, distinguished colleagues, the aforementioned reasons are not compliant with the condition imposed by the Constitution on the need to meet a public calamity or emergency. Moreover, the reasons are contingent on the end of the fiscal year twenty sixteen and the start of fiscal year twenty seventeen, which are more than two months away from now. So there is no question of emergency or urgency. And three, while the distribution of copies of the printed bill in its final form is dispensable, when there is a valid certification of urgency, there must at least be a showing that the third reading copy is complete with the incorporation of the amendments to the General Appropriations Bill by the small committee, so much so that members of the House are informed that the bill proposed to be voted upon on third reading is already complete. Nothing has been shown to the members of the House. For all the foregoing reasons, Mister Speaker, distinguished colleagues, I have grave reservations on approving on third reading House Bill Number Thirty-Four-O-eight or the Twenty-Seventeen General Appropriations Bill. It does not comply with the constitutional requirement under Section Twenty-Six, Paragraph Two of Article Six of the Constitution. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
The manifestation of the distinguished gentleman, Representative, uh, Lagman from Albay is duly noted. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I reiterate my, uh, regional motion to consider House Bill Number Three-Four-Zero-Eight and conduct the nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General will read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number Three-Four-Zero-Eight, a knockball bidding funds for the operation of the government of the Republic of the Philippines from January one to December thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen, and for other purposes. Roll call of members consideration House Bill Number Three-Four-Zero-Eight. Abad, Abaya, Abayon, Abiliyanoza, Abu, Abuek, Acharon, Akop, Akosta, Akosta Alba, Ajong, Adbingula, Agarau, Agabao, Aglipaybiliar, Akbar, Albano, Alcala, Aliano, Almario, Almonte, Alontenaguyan, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensha, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barsaga, Batawil, Batucabe, Bautista Bandigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Asso Cristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bondok, Bordado.
Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker. The, the voting cannot be interrupted with the indulgence of the gentleman.
Just serve your, uh, answer for your, uh, a reason for your vote after the voting.
Okay, thank you very much, Mister Speaker.
Bravo Anthony, Bravo Merabida, Brosas, Bulut Bigtang, Kagas, Calderón, Kalik Surubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilaw, Castelo, Caso Franz, Caso Fredinil, Katamco, Kaitano, Celeste, Seravika, Sirines, Chávez, Chipeko, Ko, Kuanko, Juliantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Osalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Dalog, Dasa, Dezus, De Venesia, De Vera, De Pensor, Delmar. Delmar, Del Rosario, Delosa Montalia, De Popor Abdullah, De Popor Khalid, Duavit, Yes. Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Hermita Bohain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrela, Eusebio, Ivardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferret Juliet, Ferret Luis, Periol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, García Gwendolin, García Uc, García Albano, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Arroyedo Dong, González Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Herrera Di. Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Ko, Kong Hun, Labat Labat, Lakson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Lim Kaitchong, Lubrigat, Lopez Benhor, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodadato Suarto, Magodadato Sajid, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malañaón, Wominal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pakiau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panginiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Robapuno, Robes, Yes, Rob. Rokamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque Harry, Roque Rogelio, Sakdalan, Sagarbaría, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbagon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Santos Rejto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar, Savillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swan Sige Strilita, Swan Siguorayo, Suárez, Sielbarado. Tambunting. Tan Angelina. Tan Milagrosa. Tan Sherni. Tejada. Teves. Chanco. Ting. Tiño. Tolentino. Trenyas. Tugna. Tupas. Turabinataman. Ti. Umali. Unavia. Ungab. Uniko. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Uy Barreta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Villarde. Velasco. Velasco Caterra. Veloso. Vergara. Billa Puerte. Billa Nueva. Billa Rasa Suárez. Billa Rica. Billa Rin. Wilago. Yap Arthur. Yap Mileseho. Yap Victor. Yu. Samor Markarmin. Samor Ronaldo. Sarate. Subiri. Second call, consideration House Bill Number 3408. Acosta Alba. Alcala. Aliano. Almario. Álvarez. Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Antonio. Arbison. Arenas. Aumentado. Bagilat. Barberas. Bernos. Biazon. Bordado. Brosas. Bulut Bigtang. Kagas. Kari. Cayetano. Celeste. Seravica. Elago. Erise. Evardone. Fernando. Fente Belia. Gachalian. Gómez. Goriseta. Lasatin. Lopez Carlo. Loyola. Magodadato Suarto. Marcos. Nieto. Primicia Sagabas. Rocamora. Romualdes. Roque Harry. Salceda. Sema. Tan Sherni. Tolentino. Trenyas. Uy Barreta. Yap Arthur. Yap Mileseho. Yap Victor. Yu. Sarate.
With two hundred forty-three voting in the affirmative, five against, and one abstention, the Chair declares House Bill 3408, An Act Appropriating Funds for the Operation The Government of the Republic of the Philippines from January one to December thirty-one, twenty seventeen, as having been approved on the third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the representative from Albay? Representative Legman?
May I know, Mr. Speaker, how my vote was recorded?
Abstained.
Mr. Speaker, let me just explain very briefly my abstention.
Yap.
I abstain based on my earlier manifestation and reservation on the validity of our voting today on third reading.
Please proceed your three minutes.
Mr. Speaker, I abstain because, as I previously articulated, I have great reservations on our voting on third reading today pursuant to the certification of the President for the need for the immediate passage of this measure because such certification is not compliant with the condition of the Constitution wherein there can be a dis- uh, there can be a, a immediate passage without following a rules if there is a reference or invocation of a national emergency and calamity. The letter of the President did not refer or invoke any national and any national calamity or emergency. Consequently, I have great reservation on the validity of our judicial action this afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 335. For this purpose, may we request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for the nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General will read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 335, An Act Authorizing the Court to Require Community Service in New Impeachment for the Penalty of Arrested Minor. Amending for the purpose, Chapter Five, Title Three, Book One of Act Number 3815 as amended, otherwise known as the revised Penal Code. Roll call of members, consideration House Bill Number 335. Abad. Abaya. Abayon. Abilianosa. Abu. Abueg. Acharon. Akop. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adjong. Adbingkula. Agarau. Agabau. Aglipay Binyar. Akbar. Albano. Alcala. Aliano. Almario. Almonte. Alontenagiat. Álvarez France. Álvarez Mercedes. Álvarez Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Angaro Castillo. Anturino. Antonio. Aragonés. Arbison. Arcillas. Arenas. Atsensah. Aumentado. Bagau. Bagaching. Bagilat. Banal. Barberas. Barsaga. Batawin. Batukabe. Bautista Pandigan. Bilaro. Belmonte Feliciano. Belmonte Elsie Cristoper. Belmonte Ricardo. Benitez. Bernos. Bertis. Biazon. Biliones. Biron. Bolilia. Bondok. Bordado. Bravo Anthony. Bravo Maravida. Brosas. Bulut Bigtang. Kagas. Calderón. Calixterubiano. Caminero. Campos. Canama. Kari. Casilau. Castelo. Casofrance. Casofedinil. Katamco. Cayetano. Celeste. Seravica. Siriles. Chávez. Chipeco. Ko. Cohuango. Juliantes. Cortés. Cortuna. Costalan. Crisologo. Kuwa. Cuaresma. Cueva. Dalibe. Dalob. Dasa. Jesús. De Venesia. De Vera. Defensor. Del Mar. Del Rosario. Del Loza Montalia. Dimaporo Abdullah. Dimapto- Dimaporo Khalid. Duavit. Durano. Di. Elago. Enverga. Erise. Regel. Hermita Boain. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrella. Giuseppeo. Evardone. Fariñas. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Piriol. Floirendo. Flores. Fortun. Fortuno. Fente Belia. Garbin. Garcia Gwendolin. Garcia Uc. Garcia Albano. Garin. Garin Richard. Garin Charon. Gasataya. Gachalian. Heron. Guana Cristina. Gomart. Gómez. Gonzaga. Gonzalez Alexandria. Gonzalez Arroyo Dong. Gonzalez Fernando. Goriseta. Gulyas. Hernandez. Herrera Di. Hofer. Alusos. Javier. Ko. Konghun. Labad Labad. Laxson. Legman. Lanete. Logan. Lasatin. Lia Chon. Lee. Lim Kichong. Lubrigat. Lopez Benhor. Lopez Carlo. Lopez Manuel. Loyola. Makapagalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Magodadato Suarto. Magodadato Sagid. Marco Leta. Marcos. Marino. Marquez. Martinez. Matugas. Miliana. Mending. Mercado. Mirasol. Montoro. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nogralis Jerico. Nogralis Carlo. Nolasco. Núñez Malañaon. Wominal. Ocampo. Olivares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vini. Pacquiao. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panganiban. Panotes. Papandayan. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Primicia Sagabas. Kimbo. Radasa. Ramirisato. Ramos. Relampagos. Rivilla. Ropapuno. Robes. Rocamora. Rodríguez Isidro. Rodríguez Maximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romaldo. Roque Harry. Roque Roelho. Sakdalan. Segarberia. Sahali. Salceda. Salimbangan. Salo. Salon. Sambar. Sandoval. Santos Rehto. Sarmiento Cesar. Sarmiento Edgar. Savillano. Sema. Xiao. Silverio. Singson. Suansig Strilita. Suansig Urasho. Suárez. Silbarado. Tambunting. Tan Angelina. Tan Milagrosa. Tan Sherni. Tejada. Teves. Chanco. Ting. Tiño. Tolentino. Trenyas. Tugna. Tupas. Turabinataman. Ti. Umali. Unavia. Ungab. Uniko. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Uy Barreta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Villarde. Velasco. Velasco Caterra. Veloso. Vergara. Billa Puerte. Billa Nueva. Billa Rasa Suárez. Billa Rica. Billa Rin. Wilago. Yap Arthur. Yap Mileseho. Yap Victor. Yu. Samor Markarmin. Samor Ronaldo. Sarate. Second call, consideration House Bill Number 335. Acosta Alba. Alcala. Almario. Álvarez. Amante. Amatong. Arbison. Arenas. Aumentado. Bagilat. Barberas. Bernos. Biazon. Bordado. Brosas. Bulut Bigtang. Kagas. Kari. Cayetano. Celeste. Seravica. Elago. Erise. Evardone. Fernando. Fente Belia. Gachalian. Goriseta. Lasatin. Loyola. Makapagalaroyo. Magodadato Suarto. Marcos. Primicia Sagabas. Rocamora. Roque Harry. Salceda. Tolentino. Trenyas. Uy Barreta. Yap Arthur. Yap Victor. Yu. Sarate.
With two hundred fifty-two members voting in the affirmative, zero against, zero abstention, the Chair declares House Bill Number 335 as having been approved on the third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 336. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and to call the roll for the nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General will read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 336, An Act Excluding from the Application of the Indeterminate Sentence Law. Those convicted of criminal offenses against a minor, amending for the purpose Act Number 4103 as amended, otherwise known as the Indeterminate Sentence Law. Roll call of members, consideration House Bill Number 336. Abad. Abaya. Abayon. Abilianosa. Abu. Abueg. Acharon. Akop. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adjong. Adbingkula. Agarau. Adbingkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Akbar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alontenagiat, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Arenas, Atsensha, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barsaga, Batawin, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Eusecristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulutbiktang, Kagas, Calderon, Kalix Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casofrance, Casofedinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Ceravica, Sirinyes, Chávez, Chipeco, Ko, Kuwanko, Juliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Dalob, Dasa, Jesus, De Venecha, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, De Lozamantalia, Dimaporo Dula, Dimaporo Muhaaba, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Rigel, Hermita Boain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Guano Cristina, Gomart, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Ko, Conghun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaichong, Lubrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodadatu Suarto, Magodadatu Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mercado, Mira Sol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malañaon, Wominal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque Harry, Roque Roelho, Sakdalan, Sagarberia, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabillano, Semah, Xiau, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Strilita, Swansing Urasho, Suárez, Silbarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shiny, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Turabinataman, Ti, Umalí, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Caterra, Veloso, Vergara, Bilyapuerte, Bilyanueva, Bilyerasa Suárez, Bilyarica, Bilyarin, Bilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milesho, Yap Victor, Yu, Samora Markarmen, Samora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri. Second call, consideration House Bill Number 336. Acosta Alba, Alkala, Almario, Amante, Amatong, Arbison, Aumentado, Bagilat, Barberz, Bernos, Biazon, Bordado, Brosas, Kagas, Kari, Cayetano, Celeste, Ceravica, Erise, Evardone, Fernando, Fentebelia, Gachalian, Goriseta, Lasatin, Loyola, Magodadatu Marcos, Rocomora, Roque, Salceda, Suárez, Tolentino, Trenyas, Ui Barreta, Yap, Sarate.
With two hundred fifty-seven members voting in the affirmative, zero against, and zero abstention, the Chair declares House Bill 336 as having been approved on the third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading, House Bill Number 477. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and to call the roll for the nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General will read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 477, an act declaring January twenty-third every year special non-working holiday in the entire country to commemorate the Declaration of the First Philippine Republic. Roll call of members, consideration House Bill Number 477. Abad, Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abweg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Adbingkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Akbar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alontenagiat, Alvarez, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensha, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barsaga, Batawin, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulutbiktang, Kagas, Calderon, Kalix Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Ceravica, Sirinyes, Chávez, Chipeco, Ko, Kuwanko, Juliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Dalob, Dasa, Jesus, De Venecha, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, De Lozamantalia, Dimaporo, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Rigel, Hermita Boain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentebelia, Garbin, Garcia, Garcia Albano, Garin, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Go, Gomez, Gonzalez, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Ko, Conghun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaichong, Lubrigat, López, Loyola, Makapakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodadatu Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mercado, Mira Sol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis, Nolasco, Núñez Malañaon, Wominal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong, Ortega, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodríguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarberia, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Sabillano, Semah, Xiau, Silverio, Singson, Swansing, Suárez, Silbarado, Tambunting, Tan, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Turabinataman, Ti, Umalí, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Caterra, Veloso, Vergara, Bilyapuerte, Bilyanueva, Bilyerasa Suárez, Bilyarica, Bilyarin, Bilago, Yap, Yu, Samora, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred fifty-seven members voting in the affirmative, zero against, and zero abstention, the Chair declares House Bill 447 as having been approved on the third and final reading.
Mr. Speaker, I'm sorry but...
What's the pleasure of...
I wanted to ask how my vote was registered and then you went ahead and declared that there was no opposition or abstention to the voting. I was trying to signal them that I was not voting in favor of that House bill. So I appeal, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended. Session resumed. We will make the necessary correction to reflect the correction made by the representative from Manila, Representative Okampo. With two hundred fifty-six members voting in the affirmative, one against, and zero abstention, the Chair declares House Bill Number 477 as having been approved on the third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 1344. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General will read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 1344, an act prescribing stricter penalties on the crime of delivering prisoners from jail and infidelity in the custody of prisoners, amending for the purpose Articles 156, 223, and 224 of Act Number 3815 as amended, otherwise known as the Revised Penal Code of the Philippines. Roll call of members, consideration House Bill Number 1344. Abad, Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abweg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Adbingkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Akbar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alontenagiat, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensha, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barsaga, Batawin, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Eusecristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maravida, Brosas, Bulutbiktang, Kagas, Calderon, Kalix Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casofrance, Casofedinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Ceravica, Sirinyes, Chávez, Chipeco, Ko, Kuwanko, Juliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Dalob, Dasa, Jesus, De Venecha, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, De Lozamantalia, Dimaporo Dula, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Rigel, Hermita Boain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Evardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Guano Cristina, Gomart, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Ko, Conghun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limcaichong, Lubrigat, López Benur, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodadatu Suarto, Magodadatu Sagid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mercado, Mira Sol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis, Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malañaon, Wominal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Revilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque Harry, Roque Roelho, Sakdalan, Sagarberia, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabillano, Semah, Xiau, Silverio, Singson, Swansing Strilita, Swansing Urasho, Suárez, Silbarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shiny, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Turabinataman, Ti, Umalí, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Caterra, Veloso, Vergara, Bilyapuerte, Bilyanueva, Bilyerasa Suárez, Bilyarica, Bilyarin, Bilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milesho, Yap Victor, Yu, Samora, Markarmen, Samora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri. Maracarmen, Samora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred fifty-eight members voting in the affirmative, zero against, zero abstention, the Chair declares House Bill Number 1344 as having been approved on the third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 3955. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for the nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General will read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 3955, an act mandating the government to pay the capital gains tax and the documentary stand tax due in addition to the just compensation for the sale of real property in the exercise of the state's power of eminent domain. Amending for the purpose Sections 24D and 196 of Republic Act Number 8424 as amended, otherwise known as the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997. Roll call of members, consideration of House Bill Number 3955. Abad, Abaya, Abayon, Abiliyanoza, Abu, Abueg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Akbar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alontenegiat, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angarakastilio, Antonino, Antonio, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensha, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Bilaro, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Cagas, Calderon, Calix Rubiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro, Katamco, Cayetano, Sileste, Seravika, Siriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Ko, Kuwanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Dalop, Dasa, Deus, De Venecha, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalla, Nimopo罗Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Hermita Boain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Giuseppeo, Ivardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fenteberia, Garbin, Garcia, Garcia Albano, Garin, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Go, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez, Goreseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Ko, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Limkay Chong, Lobrigat, Lopez, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato, Marcos, Marcoleta, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Dolasco, Núñez Malañaon, Waminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong, Ortega, Pakiau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relampagos, Ribeña, Roapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, Sandoval, Santos Rector, Sarmiento, Sabillano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Swansing, Suárez, Silvarado, Tambuntin, Tan, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupas, Turabinataman, Ti, Umalí, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui, Ui Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Caterra, Veloso, Vergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villerasa Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap, Yu, Samora, Sarate, Subiri.
With two hundred fifty-eight members voting in the affirmative, zero against and zero abstention, the Chair declares House Bill Number 3955 as having been approved on the third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we direct the Secretariat to send copies of the bills that we approved on third reading to the Senate. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to send the copies to the Senate.
Mr. Speaker, we recognize the distinguished gentleman from Bayan Muna, the Honorable Carlos Zarate, for a brief manifestation.
The distinguished gentleman from Bayan Muna, Representative Carlos Zarate is hereby recognized.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Ang aking pong manifestasyon ay hingil sa pagkapasaan ang kapulungan ito ng House Bill Number 3408. Huliho akong dumating nung matawag ang ating roll at ang pagbutuhan dahil unang galit pa ako sa Sinado, sa ginawang pagdinig naman sa usapinang pagpasaan ng SSS pension. Kaya po, ginawang speaker, gusto ko lang hong i-manifest na kung nagkataon na andito ako sa kapulungan ito ng magbutuhan tayo sa House Bill Number 3408, ako po sana ay nagre-histro ng negatibong boto para po sa House Bill Number 3408. Yun lang po ang aking maiksing manifestation. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up House Resolution 105 under Committee Report Number 14 of the Committee on Justice. And for this, please direct the Secretary General to read the title of the resolution.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the Committee Report 14 and House Bill, the title of the bill, the Committee Report 14.
House Resolution Number 105, resolution calling for an investigation in aid of legislation on the proliferation of drugs syndicates at the National Belibid Prison.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 105.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. House Resolution, a Committee Report 14, House Resolution 105 is hereby adopted.
Majority Leader, I move for suspension, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended. Session resumed.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the distinguished minority leader, the Honorable Danilo Suárez, for a manifestation.
The distinguished gentleman minority leader, Representative Suárez of Quezon is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Honors, in connection with Committee Report Number 14, House Resolution Number 105, the minority's position is that we are, we're not going to support the Committee Report as we believe that there should be a closure. After conducting several hearings, live airing of the procedures, radio, TV, and all the major networks and broadsheets, the minority feels that there should be a recommendation on what should be done. In accordance with our, in connection with this issue, the minority will come up with a parallel report of recommendation on House Resolution Number 105. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the distinguished senior deputy minority leader, the Honorable Lito Atsensha, for a manifestation.
The distinguished gentleman, senior minority leader, Lito Atsensha is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We join the position of the minority leader on our observations that this recommendation set by the Committee on Justice are not complete because it offers no conclusion as to what their findings are actually. But we would like to add a little more. Reading that set of recommendations, they did not mention the real problems existing in the new Belibid compound which has caused the proliferation of drugs. Di wala pong binanggit doon 'yung korapsyon na nangyayari, 'yung lagayan. Lahat po is sinisi at sinisisi, pero 'yung pong mga talagang pasimuno ng bayaran at lagayan sa National Belibid compound, ay hindi man lang binanggit. So this findings of the Committee on Justice are definitely incomplete and in fact shaded with partisan interests considering that there was no mention whatsoever as to who should really be made responsible to what's going on at Montilupa. Nakakahiya po ito, Mr. Speaker, and we would like to dissociate ourselves from this particular set of recommendations. Sinabi po ang lahat, sinisisi po ang lahat, pero wala pong sinisisi dun sa tunay na pasimuno, the former Secretary of Justice. With that, we would join the dissenting position on the matter.
Majority Leader.
With that, Mr. Speaker, we move to adopt the findings and recommendations of the Committee on Justice as contained in Committee Report Number 14.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Committee Report 14, House Resolution 105, is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following resolutions to the appropriate committees. 418, Committee on Energy, 409 to the Committee on Energy, 421 to the Committee on Justice, 423 to the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries, 425 to the Committee on Ecology, 427 to the Committee on Justice, 429 to the Committee on Basis Conversion, 432 to the Committee on Labor and Employment, 433 to the Committee on Human Rights, 434 to the Committee on Human Rights, 435 to the Committee on Human Rights, 438 to the Committees on Basic Education and Culture and Higher and Technical Education, 439 Committee on National Defense, 441 Committee on Transportation, 442 Committees on Agriculture and Food and Food Security, 444 Committee on Health, 445 Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization, 446 Committee on Justice, 447 Committee on Transportation, 452 Committee on Human Rights, 45455 Committees on Games and Amusements and Dangerous Drugs, 456 Committee on Dangerous Drugs. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we greet the guests of the distinguished gentleman from the First District of Makati City, the Honorable Manuel Monsur del Rosario III. The Raymond de Vera, the senior committee member of MFT Group of Companies, and Victor Zapantaman Lapas, a committee member of the MFT Group of Companies.
The guest of Honorable Monsur del Rosario, please rise and be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Also, Mr. Speaker, we have the guests of the distinguished gentleman from the Fourth District of Cavite, the Honorable Jennifer Barsaga. They're officials from the City Government of Das Mariñas. They are headed by City Vice Mayor Raúl Rex Mangubat and his counselors.
The guest of Representative Barsaga, Fourth District of Cavite, please rise and be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may I be recognized?
The gentleman from the First District of Quezon Minority Floor Leader, Suárez is hereby recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I respectfully move that Honorable Harlen Neil Abayon be designated as Assistant Deputy, as elected Deputy Minority Floor Leader. Assistant Minority Floor Leader. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the following members of the minority be elected to be members for the Committee on Indigenous Peoples. Congresswoman Harlen Arcillas, Congresswoman Cecilia Junila Chávez, and Congresswoman Julieta Cortuna. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the gentleman from the First District of Albay, the Honorable Edsel Lagman.
The distinguished gentleman from the First District of Albay, Representative Lagman, is hereby recognized.
I was not really aware that we were already passing or approving the recommendation of the Committee on Justice. I was under the impression that such an important resolution will be discussed extensively in the House, in the plenary and the distinguished Chairman of the Committee on Justice would defend the resolution or the report of his committee. I prepared a number of questions to the distinguished Chairman of the Committee on Justice.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, your honor, by way of answer to the Honorable Lagman, the Committee Report of the Committee on Justice has been approved in whole by the plenary a few minutes earlier. In fact, the members of the minority, the Honorable Minority Floor Leader and the Deputy Minority Floor Leader, the Honorable Suárez and the Honorable Atsensha, respectively, spoke against the Committee Report and then pursuant to Section 17, now of the Rules of Procedures Governing Inquiries in Aid of Legislation. in Aid of Legislation, which I may read, upon inclusion of the report in the Calendar of Business, the plenary may approve or adopt, disapprove or reject in whole or in part the report and its recommendations or committed to the archives. Plenary adopted the findings and recommendations of the Committee on Justice.
Well, that is the provision, Your Honor, but under that provision, it is understood that before the plenary would approve, reject, or archive a particular Committee Report, there should be discussions, and the Chairman of the Committee is called upon to defend the Committee Report. But that did not happen, Mr. Speaker. I don't think we should be accustomed to fast-tracking certain actions of this House, particularly on very important measures. May we know whether the consideration of that Committee Report Number 14 of the Committee on Justice has been included in the reference of business for consideration today?
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, plenary action on the Committee Report is as follows, covered by Section 17 on the Rules of Procedures Governing Inquiries in Aid of Legislation. Everything was done in order, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor. May I read Section 17, Plenary Action on the Report. The report upon inclusion in the Order of Business, this is by the Committee on Rules, shall be referred to the Committee on Rules for appropriate action. The Committee on Rules shall thereafter include the report in the Calendar of Business. Mr. Speaker, the Committee on Rules met at 3:30 this afternoon, and it was approved by the Committee on Rules for inclusion in the Calendar of Business of plenary today after spirited debate lasting more than an hour where the sponsor himself was in defense of his measure, questioned by many of the members of the Committee on Rules. The session was well underway when the Committee on Rules ended its special meeting on debate on Committee Report Number 14, and it was included in the Calendar of Business for today.
May we be furnished with a copy of the Calendar of Business wherein this particular Committee Report Number 14 was included?
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, this is a copy of the business for the day, which I will hand personally to our Honorable.
Well, that was not circulated to the members of the House. It could be with the Rules Committee or with the Majority Leader, but it was not in any manner distributed to the members of the House. As a matter of fact, earlier this afternoon, I made a reservation with the Majority Leader and with the Deputy Majority Leaders that I have questions on the report. I don't have any copy of the calendar where this Committee Report Number 14 has been included.
Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, we ask for a few minutes' suspension.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we again recognize the distinguished gentleman from the First District of Albay, the Honorable Edsel Lagman.
The distinguished gentleman from the First District of Albay, Representative Edsel Lagman is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, but let me first say that like the rest most probably of the members, we do not have a copy of the calendar wherein this particular House, this particular Committee Report Number 14 has been included for plenary consideration. Number two, the members of the House do not have a complete copy of the report. The report includes a voluminous annexes. And how can the members of the House really vote on this very important report without getting a complete copy of the report with the annexes? Having said that, Mr. Speaker, let me go to my manifestation. We congratulate the leadership and membership of the Committee on Justice for deciding not to find probable cause and not to recommend the prosecution of Senator Lyra de Lima for allegedly receiving drug money from convicts and inmates of the new Belibid Prison. But having said that, Mr. Speaker, I surmise that the Committee on Justice decided against finding probable cause and recommending the prosecution of Senator de Lima because the Committee of Justice does not have the jurisdiction to find probable cause and recommend the prosecution of any person unless to have committed a crime. The jurisdiction of the Committee on Justice pursuant to our rules, Section 28(b), is limited to and I quote, "all matters directly and principally relating to the administration of justice, the judiciary, the practice of law, and integration of the bar, legal aid, penitentiaries and reform school, adult probation, impeachment proceedings, registration of blind titles, immigration, deportation, naturalization, and the definition of crimes and other offenses punishable by law and their penalties." In other words, the jurisdiction of the Committee on Justice does not extend to the investigation of any malfeasance, misfeasance, and nonfeasance in office committed by officers and employees of the government and its political subdivisions and instrumentalities. As a matter of fact, this is the jurisdiction of the Committee on Good Government. In fact, Mr. Speaker, the jurisdiction to find probable cause with respect to the commission of crimes belongs to the prosecutorial agency of the government or the Office of the Public Prosecutor under the Department of Justice. Even House Resolution Number 105 did not specifically direct the Committee on Justice Now, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, since the Committee on Justice has no jurisdiction to find probable cause and recommend the prosecution of Senator Di Lima, and the investigation of malfeasance, misfeasance, and unfeasance committed by government officials and employees belong to the jurisdiction of the Committee on Good Government, and the authority to find probable cause with respect to the commission of crimes belongs to the prosecutorial agency of the government or the Office of the Public Prosecutor under the Department of Justice. The question is, why then did the distinguished Chairman of the Committee on Justice allow the introduction of affidavits and testimonies on Senator Di Lima's alleged receiving of drug money? This was beyond its jurisdiction, and it was not directed to make such investigation. Then, presenting from the foregoing premises that the Committee on Justice has no jurisdiction, the jurisdiction belongs to the prosecutorial agency of the government or to the Committee on Good Government, because the next question is, why then did the committee include in its committee report the following findings? A, and I quote, "Ablen and Ragus testified that they personally delivered the money collected from the inmates to the House of then-Secretary Di Lima. Likewise, all witnesses, inmates, except for Sebastián, testified that they were instructed through Ronny Dian, Joel, Jonel Sanchez, and J.B. Sebastián to raise money for the campaign funds of Secretary Di Lima for her senatorial bid. The inmate witness tagged Secretary Di Lima as the protector of drug syndicates. All this transpired during Ragus and Bocayos incumbency, as said of the Bureau of Corrections and Co." There was no necessity of raising this finding because in the first place, the committee has no jurisdiction to investigate malfeasance, misfeasance, and unfeasance. It has no authority to investigate on the alleged or on the allegation that Senator Di Lima received drug money. So this is completely obtuse, irrelevant, and impertinent to the report. B, the committee report says, "The confluence of events and circumstances point in no uncertain terms the veracity of the statement of witness that during the tenure of then-Secretary Di Lima, between 2012 and 2015, a fundraising activity transpired to finance her senatorial bid in 2016." Again, the committee has no jurisdiction to make this finding because it has no power or authority to find probable cause and recommend the prosecution of any person who has committed a crime. As a matter of fact, it did not recommend the prosecution of Senator Di Lima. From the news reports and the statements before the Committee on Justice of DOJ Secretary Aguirre, he purposely brought witnesses to the Committee on Justice to prove, among others, that Senator Di Lima received drug money from convicts and inmates of the new Belibid Prison to fund her senatorial campaign. Now, the Committee on Justice is deferring to the jurisdiction of the Department of Justice to prosecute Di Lima. If this Chairman of the Committee on Justice was allowed to defend his committee report, I should have asked him to explain the ping-pong interplay between the Department of Justice and the Committee on Justice. With this development, the Committee on Justice deferring to the Department of Justice, the prosecution of Senator Di Lima, there is credence to the accusation that the Committee on Justice allowed itself to be used by the executive department to the Secretary of Justice in embarking on a malevolent odyssey of shaming and vilifying Senator Di Lima. Had the distinguished Chairman of the Committee of Justice been asked to defend his report, then he could have the option to answer or react to this statement. One of the recommendations of the Committee on Justice is the reimposition of the death penalty on drug cases. It says in his report, and I quote, "The reimposition of the death penalty on drug cases pending the reform of the criminal justice system." This recommendation is not necessary because pending for consideration is Administration Bill Number 1 calling for the reimposition of the death penalty on innocent crimes. The Committee on Justice need not conduct an investigation to make this particular recommendation because this is already covered by House Bill Number 1. Of course, I am against this measure because it took me 20 years, 20 years of crosshairs for the abolition of that penalty. This is not the time to discuss why the death penalty should not be restored. Among the legislative measures recommended by the Committee on Justice are granting of exceptions to the anti-wirepapping law, bank secrecy law, and anti-money laundering act with respect to inmates and drug-related cases. But if my distinguished colleagues read the committee report, there were no specific amendments and specific exception to the aforementioned statutes which the Committee on Justice recommended. In other words, remedial legislation or in aid of legislation was not the primary objective of the Committee on Justice. It also recommended in changing the status of prison guards and other NBP personnel to tenured employees, from tenured employees to confidential employees in order to provide flexibility in the bureau director in reassigning or dismissing errant guards and personnel. I hope the Committee on Justice understood the import of this recommendation. If this proposal is approved, what will happen to the security of tenure of prison guards and other NBP personnel who are under the civil service? The proposal insures both the innocent and culpable personnel of the new Belibid Prison. I know that the members of the House are now ready to start their vacation. I have other questions and matters to discuss, particularly on why the Committee on Justice embarked on this investigation with respect to the existence of a narcotics trade in the new Belibid Prison when way back years ago. And until very recently, this is an open secret. It has been investigated before, and what is needed is the prosecution of the culprits and the guilty parties. So I would say that this investigation of the Committee on Justice was an exercise in futility, except to align itself with the executive in a campaign to shame and vilify a member of the Senate. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for giving me this opportunity. And I don't know how my vote was recorded because I did not participate in the voting, but let that be as it is. Thank you again, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we authorize all committees to conduct meetings or public hearings if deemed necessary during the House recess from October 22, 2016 to November 6, 2016.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, before we adjourn, allow me to thank and commend the members for their attendance in 39 session days since the convening of the 17th Congress on July 25, 2016. The average attendance of members for the 39 session days reached 257 members for every session day, or 88% attendance. I also thank and commend the members for the record-setting approval of the maiden budget of the third administration by the House of Representatives under the leadership of Speaker Pantaleon Alvarez. For the first time in history, plenary debates were done in eight days. More so, Mr. Speaker and honorable colleagues, for the first time in history, in all of the eight days, the roll was called every morning during session, and we had corona every time the roll was called. The calling of the roll of members every morning is unprecedented. Another accomplishment is that the chamber has acted on measures filed before it. As of this day, there are more than 4,000 bills and 500 resolutions filed and referred to various committees. We have six bills already approved on third reading, two bills approved on second reading, and 21 resolutions duly adopted. We also have adopted the recommendations of a committee as a result of its conduct in aid of legislation. And during the 39 session days, 98 privileged speeches were delivered, with 85 of them duly referred to various committees. On behalf of the Speaker, who is an official travel business to the People's Republic of China, I commend and congratulate all members for their hard work and dedication. This has been a truly productive session. Special mention goes to Senior Deputy Majority Leader Rimpi Mundo and the members of the Committee on Rules, to Chairman Carlo Nogales and the Vice Chairpersons of the Appropriations Committee, Minority Leader Dani Suarez and the members of the minority, our colleagues from the group of seven independents for the collaborative and critical collaboration that we have. We hope to make this Congress the best ever. And that note, Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn until Monday, November 7, at 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The session is adjourned until 4 o'clock, November 7, 2017.